Good evening, everybody. We're going to get our meeting started, so if you could just find a seat. From my fellow trustees, I am looking for a motion to exit exec and go into, you know, rejoin public. I've got Xavier and a second from Tom, all in favor. All right, we're going to stand and say the pledge. Join us. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right.
Yes, no, and that's fine.
Welcome to everybody. We have some really special guests tonight because it was our tenure reception, so special welcome to them and their families. I want to just say quickly that, in the case of an emergency, there are exits to the back of the room and to the sides. Please just find your way calmly to the exits. Also, this is a smoke-free building and the grounds are smoke-free, just like all of our districts. Okay. We, are we starting right at the public hearing?
Um, yes.
Or do you want to start? Okay. So, we're going to start with a public hearing that we're having on the district-wide safety plan for this 2019-20 school year. Dr. Acker is here to give our presentation. I'm actually going to move my seat to get out of the way. Hit it.
Okay, so today we have to do a presentation of the district-wide safety plan, and at the end of the plan, we welcome any comments from the public or any questions, and Jared Stein will be here to assist me with the questions. I typically don't like very wordy presentations, right, with slides with lots of words on them, but we're presenting to you the safety plan for the district. There is a lot of important information in that plan, because one of our primary goals is to make sure that our students and our staff are safe, right? School safety right now, it's of paramount importance. There's a lot of information in the building-level plans. So, this is a very wordy presentation, but it's a very important presentation, and if you have any questions about anything that I'm presenting, please, at the end of the presentation, ask them if you need anything clarified, because again, it is a very, very important topic, and there's going to be lots of information presented. So, the Safe Schools Against Violence in Education, the SAFE Act. The SAFE Schools Act Against Violence in Education was passed by the New York State Legislature and signed into law by former Governor George Pataki on July 24, 2000, to address issues of school safety and violence prevention. All of our documents are prepared under the guidance of the New York State Guidance Document for School Safety Plans. Some of the highlights that came out about three years ago, we haven't presented this safety plan in a couple of years, so some of the highlights that came out a few years ago was that the state required that school districts appointed chief emergency officer, that the districts use a building-level safety plan template that I'll talk a little bit more about further in the presentation, that we have additional and expanded drills in all of our schools, that we establish a district-wide safety team, and that we develop a district-wide safety plan. So, I will be getting into more information about that. So, what is the difference between the district-wide safety plans and the building-level emergency response plans? The biggest difference is the district-wide, it's very broad. We're just going to be telling you some of the things that are contained in the building-level plans, but we do not provide you with the details of the drilling, of the command central, who is in charge, who's not. It's very, very broad, and it's available, the board has to adopt it, and it's open for public review. The building-level emergency response plans, that's where the details are for any type of emergency that a building has. So, it's very strategic, it's very detailed, it shows how school personnel and students respond in the building to an emergency, it details about evacuation, where students reassembled, and the building-level plans are highly confidential. They cannot be viewed by any of the public, and they are protected from disclosure under Article 6 of Public Officers' Law. As you can understand why these should not be public, because we don't want anybody to know how we are going to react to an emergency that provides us with a better opportunity to remain safe. We don't want, in other words, the bad guys to have our information. All New York State schools are required to use the building-level emergency response plan template that was developed and distributed by New York State Safety Improvement Team. This was critical. About three years ago, they came out with this. The importance of this is that prior, we would just develop our safety plans, use whatever format we wanted, use any type of wording we wanted, and then we provide these plans to the Suffolk County Police as well as the New York State Police. Well, every district's plan was different, so if there was an emergency and they had to turn to the page of what our district is doing in a shelter-in-place, or in a lockdown, or who the command officer is, or what the phone numbers are, they didn't know where in the plan to look for it, because everybody did something different. So, they created this template, so now every single school district's emergency plan is laid out in the same way, using the same type of verbiage. Obviously, our, we have our own internal plan as far as how we react to emergency situations, but they can easily identify where in the plan to find the information. So, that was a critical component of the changes. Another critical component of the changes was when FEMA standardized the terms and definitions for the different types of school emergencies: the shelter-in-place, the hold-in-place, evacuate, lockout, and lockdown. This is really critical also. Everybody likes to use the word, the school went into lockdown, right? Even last year, we had something on Huntington property where there was a non-school-related emergency, and we had police on our property that were, you know, attending to something else, so the school went into lockout, right? Basically, it means, don't go out there, stay away from the situation, and nobody comes into our building, but yet you can continue to teach, move around the building, and, you know, it just, the only thing you can't do is let anybody in or go out. So, Newsday went on to say that the district notified parents of the incident by phone, and the school of about 1,500 students was placed on lockdown. Lockdown means there's an intruder in the building, all right? So, if they're, they're sending out this message that the school's in lockdown, the school's in lockdown, it was not in lockdown. And the other error Newsday made was, they said the lockdown was lifted before the school's usual dismissal time of 2:20 p.m. We don't advertise our start times or our dismissal times for obvious reasons. So, now they're saying that the high school dismisses at 2:20, if anybody wants to know that, they have that information. So, the fact that these terms are used inappropriately, FEMA was very strong about making sure all school districts, all public offices, libraries, churches, use the same type of language, so the police really know what they're responding to. So, if you say, "I have a lockdown," they're coming heavily armed. If you say, "I have a flood," and we are in shelter-in-place, they're going to help us get the right authorities to, to move our students to a safer place, but not come with, with tanks. Our staff is also trained. We give out an emergency response sheet. Every year, the staff are retrained about what each of these terms mean, so that when the schools drill them, they know what type of drill it is and how to react. So, this is, this is something really important that the state did, and now, when the police come, we have to, but we still, the news still always use lockdown, lockdown, it just, they just, I don't know, like that term. Okay. And all of the district, all the building-level response plans will be submitted. They are also up for approval tonight, but obviously not for review. Once they're board-approved, they are submitted to the Suffolk County Precinct via email, then the principals of every building load them into the New York, into the state portal, where they are then distributed to the New York State Police. So, the plans are in many different areas, those are the confidential plans, so they can assist us in case, hopefully we never will have an emergency. All right, so the district-wide safety team, again, was a requirement by the state, and it consists of school boards, teachers, administrators, parent organizations, school safety personnel, local law enforcement, and emergency agencies. They are charged with the task of reviewing the district-wide safety plan every year. They did that last week. The team, the team was approved at the last board meeting, they reviewed the plan prior to this evening, and made some really valuable changes, and they did an excellent job with that. And this is our current team that was appointed at the last board meeting. So, the district-wide safety plan has four main components. General considerations and planning, risk reduction, prevention, and intervention, and early detection. That's a whole component in the plan regarding this section here. Then, response, heaven forbid there is anything, explains how the buildings will respond, and again, heaven forbid there is anything, how are we going to recover? Because recovery is a very important aspect of any emergency situation. So, the purpose. The purpose is develop a plan as per the Commissioner's regulations that the board will appoint, wait, will appoint and develop a safety team that will be charged with the development and maintenance of the plan. Identification of school teams, that was done already. Concept of operations is where the district plan refers to the building plan. So, throughout the entire district plan, you're going to see where it refers and what section in the building plan where these things are addressed in detail. So, that's the concept of operations, and the fact that we have to review it on an annual basis, put it before the public on an annual basis, and the board has to approve it. Upon approval, this will be, get submitted to the New York State Education Department. The second section deals with risk reduction, prevention, intervention, and early detection. So, the district's procedures for reducing the risk of violence, implementing programs and activities for prevention of violence, and establishing clear descriptions of actions that will be taken in the event of a violent incident or other school emergency. Research demonstrates that positive, skill-based approaches can increase the safety of students and teachers in school, as well as improve the community climate. This is very big with the social and emotional and the mental health, so the school has created programs to address these things. We have prevention and intervention strategies, this is all in that section. It addresses training drills and exercises, the implementation of school security, vital educational agency information, early detection of potentially violent behaviors, and hazard identification, such as, if you're walking around a school building, and there's bushes up close to the building where somebody could hide, you may see, all of a sudden, we're removing all these trees. We're not doing it because we are anti-trees, we're doing it because we're trying to remove places where people can hide. So, that goes with the hazard identification. These are the programs that we currently have in place to address the prevention for student, staff, and parents, all mentoring, fire safety, youth court, establish anonymous reporting mechanism for school violence, many, many programs. These are all going to be on the, in this, in the plan on the website, if you really wanted to look through everything that we offer here in the district. We're constantly adding, constantly evolving what we have to offer our staff and our students and our parents. Drills in 1920. So, New York State regulation requires that we have 12 fire/lockdown drills. Drills are conducted at each school, in each school. Four of these drills, this was another change they made several years ago, must be lockdown drills. So, if you, as parents, are saying, "Why does it seem like you're always drilling?" It's, we're required to do at least 12, but the building can do more, right? If they find that, you know, because after each drill, you're supposed to like assess how it went, what went wrong, what went right, and if they want to add more, they can, but it's a minimum of 12 drills, four being a lockdown, and then eight fire drills. And then, usually, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, there's the one early dismissal drill that's required as well. So, these are the drills that are required by the state. We have our school security that we use. All of our school security guards must have a New York State Security Guard license. They're required to go through a series of training techniques, which include emergency drills, pupil dismissal procedures, acts of violence procedures, as well as crisis prevention, crisis prevention intervention, which is CPI. New for this year, the district added a district-wide director of safety and security, Jared Stein, who has been very active already this year, visiting all the buildings. He was instrumental in helping the principals with their plans, getting them done, because everything is a very strict timeline of when these things need to be put up to the state. He's been walking the building with, you know, various constituents, so they could see any improvements that we made regarding security. We did add some security vestibules to some of our schools over the summer. We've done a lot with hardening doors, the visitor management system that we have, that I'll mention again. Primarily, the school, the school security guards, their, their roles consist of patrolling building and grounds, enforcing school rules, ensuring the safety of students, staff, and visitors, prevent damage to facilities, establish a rapport with students in order to provide an atmosphere that is safe and conducive to the proper functioning of the school, assist students or refer them to the proper staff members for assistance with any problems, assist with the implementation of the visitor management system, and does related work required, such as attending after-school activities and athletic events. Also, in this plan, it talks about the vital educational agency information. Every school building is considered an educational agency. In each of the building emergency response plans, it contains information such as school population, number of staff, any special transportation we need for students, as well as the business and home telephone numbers of key officials. These plans also include relocation and reunification locations. There could be a time where we have a school building, whether it loses power or loses heat, where they may need to relocate to another building. Our building-level plans specifically state where the school will relocate to. The reunification location, that is where, heaven forbid, we have a situation where the parents are not going to be allowed to come on campus, either because it's too dangerous for you, or because it impedes what we're trying to accomplish, so they will establish a reunification place where the families, the students will be transported to that place, and they'll be reunited with their families there. So, that's what a reunification versus relocation is. Early detection of potentially violent behaviors. Procedures for dissemination of information regarding the early detection of potential violent behaviors, such as the distribution of information, informative materials at faculty meetings throughout the school year. Staff development is conducted during the school year in order to develop awareness and provide training for staff regarding this issue. Materials are, are available for parents and community during various workshops or committee meetings, and there is a crisis response team present in each building in order to respond effectively and appropriately to a crisis involving violent behaviors. Now, this section covers response. Okay, the district policies and procedures for contacting appropriate law enforcement officials in the event of a violent incident are located in each building-level emergency response plan. In the event of an emergency, staff, students, and visitors will be contacted in one or more of the following manners: telephone, blackboard connect, intercom, radio system, verbal message, local media, email, texts, or others as appropriate. The different situational responses that are included in the building-level plans include these: earthquake, lost utilities, bomb threat, active shooter. Each one of these has a section in the emergency response plan, and explains how the building will respond and who's responsible to carry out various activities. So, it's, it's very detailed in the plan, but these are what are covered in the plan. And for obvious reasons, these guidelines are not open for public comment or review, because sharing this information could put people or facilities at risk. So, responding to acts of violence or implied or direct threats. Multi-hazard emergency response action guidelines are in each building-level emergency response plan, and they provide guidance on the district's policies and procedures for responding to direct acts of violence by students, teachers, other school personnel, and visitors to the school. As you can see, these building-level plans are incredibly comprehensive. Okay. Response continued. Response protocols. The following protocols are provided as examples that the buildings will be using. The identification of decision-makers, the plans to safeguard staff and students, procedures to provide transportation if necessary, the procedures to notify parents, the procedures to notify media, and the debriefing procedures. Also in the plan are information on how to make arrangements for obtaining emergency assistance from the local government, as well as how to obtain advice and assistance. You could be in a situation, not sure exactly how to handle it, you think something's going on, who can we call for advice and assistance, because it's not an immediate threat that we can tell. District resources are available. Well, just to let you know, a lot of, some of the local governments that we're working with are Suffolk County Police Department, Huntington Manor Fire Department, Huntington Fire Department, Huntington Community First Aid Squad, Green Lawn Fire Department, Haleside Fire Department, the American Red Cross, New York State Police, Suffolk County Public Health Department, Suffolk County Sheriff's Department, and the Eastern Suffolk Bosse's Health Safety Risk Management Services. So, those are some of the government entities that we have already had conversation with or have at our disposal. There's also district-level resources highlighted in the plan. All of the plan contain a supply inventory, which would, that identifies the district-level resources, such as fire extinguishers, cots, blankets, food supply, available facilities, first aid supplies, flashlights, bullhorn, district vehicle, and buses. So, that's all highlighted in every single building plan, as are the procedures to coordinate the use of district resources and manpower. Inside the plan, it says who reports to who, and if they're not there, who fills in, and who's responsible for which component of the emergency response. It's very, very detailed. And then, we can also do protective action options. This is where it might be appropriate for a school cancellation prior to the start of school, if we sense it could be a threat. In fact, Seaford last week operated on a two-hour delay due to a threat. It said, "Police patrolled all Seaford schools Monday," this was on the 16th of September, "after a threat was made on social media against Seaford High School. The school also had a two-hour delay because of it. Police say the threat is not believable to be credible, but they are acting out an abundance of caution. They say the schools are now safe for staff and students." So, they must have had this information prior to the start of school and made the determination to have a delay, because they weren't, really weren't sure if this was a real threat or not. So, those are some things that we could do in early dismissal, evacuations before, during, and after-school hours, and sheltering procedures. These are all protective action options that are available in the plan. And then, there's recovery. So, heaven forbid we have an incident, we have to provide the staff, the students, the community with the support that they need after going through an emergency situation. There is, there's resources for supporting the emergency response team and the post-incident team, such as relieving the members, such as giving them a chance to debrief or rehab in a quiet space, or relieving them of their responsibilities, making sure there's enough manpower to rotate, to cover. And then, the mental health service component. The building crisis response team will assist in the coordination of disaster mental health resources through the county medical health department, community resources, neighboring school districts, and other disaster mental health resources. So, this was the final component of the four phases of the district-wide safety plan, and again, the building levels are incredibly comprehensive there. You know, this is 12 pages, the building-level plans are like this thick, but they're very well organized and very easy to navigate. So, that concludes the presentation of the district-wide safety plan, and Jared's on hand, as well as myself, to answer any questions or comments or clarifications that you may have.
I'm just going to say that, just so that it's clear, we fully help to prosecute any false threats, isn't that right?
Yes.
Suffolk County Police Department has actually made it quite clear that, in a situation like that, they would shoot for felony conviction.
Kathy, you mentioned that we had to submit plans, you know, to the local and state police.
Yes.
What are the dates? Are there hard submission deadlines?
There are hard submission deadlines. October 3rd is when we're getting everything to the state and to the county.
I just had a question about the new entry system.
The visitor management system?
Visitor management, thank you.
Okay.
I knew there was a right criteria for it, I just couldn't think of it. So, I've been to a few buildings at a few different times a day, and I just wanted to say that security and the administration together at the buildings I've been at, it seems to be working really well. I was just wondering, your impression in general, is that?
That has been.
Mine was only a few times, so.
I, I think it's, it's, it's an excellent system that we put in. We piloted it in a few schools last year, just to see how it would go with the flow of people, and, and we were a little nervous about the beginning of the school year, because a lot of people come on campus right in the very beginning of the school year, so we kind of rolled it out in the primaries, but I have not had any negative feedback at all from the buildings regarding, is it slowing down, people coming in, is it a problem, is it an issue? Jared, have you heard differently? I know you've been doing a lot of training with the buildings, with the Raptor.
No, no, I mean, I think everybody's really on board, and it seems to be working wonderfully. The, all the different government agencies, they're all recommending the same thing, is to control your entry ways.
Yeah.
And that is your entry way, and this is where schools don't do much, such as that.
So, I think combination of that with the vestibules, you know, we're, we're heading in the right direction.
Yeah, and I would think that parents and families would be, for the most part, entirely on board for any actions that are taken and, you know, in trying to make the school safer for their kids. I can't imagine too many people, you know, having complaints about having to wait if it means that their kids are safer in their schools, so.
You should have a better imagination, Jim.
You haven't noticed that about me by now? Glass half-full, baby. I want to thank you, though, Kathy, you and your team, and Jared, this is, I, really comprehensive. I mean, every time I try to think about a scenario that wasn't covered, it was covered, so, you know, I really appreciate all the hard work that you all did.
We're constantly looking at ways to expand and improve, and, and, you know, Jared's been doing a great job with that as well.
Just one question. I know that, I think it was a couple of years ago, we were piloting the, the fire alarm that you pull, and the camera goes on? Is that something we're still piloting or not piloting, or please?
We, we never really had it.
No, it never, it, it.
They said we had it.
Came to fruition on a manufacturing basis, it was just something that they were.
Yeah, so we have not had it, but we are looking into some other, we are looking into increasing the number of cameras in all the buildings. We've, we've done a lot of work with the video, we've, we've enhanced the, the number of days we can save on the video, the clarity of the video. We had multiple platforms in this district, so now, we just actually finished the enhancement last weekend, all of our camera systems are on the same platform, which you can get on your phone, you can get on a computer, and you can see any, any camera in any building, so we are, we are moving ahead in a positive fashion with that, the door hardening that's been done, and we're looking into another phone system opportunity that we heard about today, where Jim would have the capability of making an announcement district-wide anywhere from his cellphone. So, we're, we're getting a quote for that. So, we are constantly trying to evolve and, and grow what we have here in the district.
Yeah, that, that had popped into my head, because I remember seeing it, and I didn't know where it had gone to, so.
Hadn't thought about that in quite a while.
All right, did any of the other trustees have questions or comments about the presentation?
Anybody in the public?
What do they, public?
I think Jim said that during the public commentary, the public can come up, so I will tell everybody, we're going to get to that section fairly soon, and if you had questions or comments about the presentation, you can come up at that time. All right, Kathy, thank you so much, and Jared, thank you.
Just to throw in an additional thank you to the gentleman sitting next to Jared, we have put in those security vestibules in, yes, Mr. George Austin.
George kind of looked next to him like he wasn't sure.
We have put those vestibules in, in, in a very short period of time, in a very functionally sound manner, and that's, thank you, George, and, and your, your folks for doing what you do.
Yes, thank you all very much, much appreciated. All right, we are going to move on to our approvals, and, okay, so, the first thing we have is the Board of Education meeting minutes from our last meeting, September 9, 2019. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, approved minutes from the meeting of Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education dated September 9, 2019. Can I get a motion? Bill, and a second. Xavier, all in favor? That's all. Okay, we have an FYI of budget transfers, and that brings us to the Treasurer's Report of August 2019. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approved the August 2019 Treasurer's Report. Do I have a motion? Christine, and a second. I got Michelle, all in favor? It's all of us, thank you. And finally, that brings us to the warrants. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approved the attached warrants, which were certified for payment on September 11, 2019. I need a motion. Michelle, and a second. Christine, all in favor? And that's everybody. All right, that brings us to communications and announcements. I think we probably all have about the same communications and announcements to share, so I'm just going to open it up to whoever gets it. gets there first. Go.
Okay, so.
Homecoming, is that what you're gonna say?
So, well, I'll give my personal point of view was that I felt like the entire weekend from Thursday through Saturday was, it just felt like community. It just felt like everybody felt included, everybody felt welcome, and that's across the district. So I really applaud the entire administration at the high school, the athletic department, whoever else planned it, everybody who had a hand in planning it, security that made it feel safe but welcome and just everything. The PTAs, the Booster Club, everybody was together, all the clubs. And it just, the funniest thing that people were walking around saying, "I feel like I'm in Iowa." At least three people say that.
Field of Dreams?
Yeah, like they just felt wholesome and like, and yeah.
A bonfire and homecoming weekend.
Not like New Yorkers.
Yeah, right. So jaded, right.
I'm probably not saying it properly, but whatever.
The school spirit I wrote in an email to our student high school principal was literally off the charts. I don't remember feeling that much pride in the district. And I mean, there have been plenty of proud moments in this district. But that particular night, boy, there was something electric in the air. It was really fantastic. Thank you for all of your hard work, all of you. Anybody else want to comment about the, we were also in the unity and the community parade a week before our homecoming parade, which was also a lovely event and I felt very well attended this year, really nice weather, too. Anybody else have anything they wanted to speak about?
I'm just gonna say that that bonfire was a fun event. I suspect it's only going to get bigger. Many more students are going to attend. Families that weren't there were looking at it online. They were really amazed at how big and how fun it was. Definitely applauds to everybody that was involved in putting that event together in the entire weekend because it truly was a special event. And I think that the the weather cooperated. Very memorable. And thank you all for that put that together because we had a great time.
Anybody else have anything? Because I have one more thing. Nope. All right. Well, I'm going to give a plug for the marching band because they have been doing a tremendous job in their first two competitions. They have another one this weekend. And then next weekend on Sunday, October 6th, am I right about the date, is the home show, which is they only get to host a home show every other year at Huntington. And it's a really wonderful event for the marching band, but also, you know, kind of a way for the parent, the organization to raise money because marching band can be kind of an expensive undertaking. So if you are around on that weekend and could make your way over to support our marching band and all the marching bands that are participating, you know, that would be great. And we'd love to see you all there.
When is that and where?
It is at Huntington High School on Sunday, October 6th. I think it starts at 11:00, but I'll find out more information.
Noon.
Oh, noon. Okay, there you go. All right. To you.
Echo the sentiments on homecoming, considering the fire is behind me.
Oh, there it is.
It was a terrific week and the weather could not have been finer. It was just, you know, you couldn't you couldn't draw the script any better than that. Just a great week full of spirit at the high school. Thank you, Mr. Cusack and Mr. Smith, Dr. Loras, and everybody at the high school who made that happen. And, you know, obviously, the bonfire was a tremendous event. The high school pep rally outdoors was was phenomenal. Darren Reed captures things on on film that the average, the average human being just cannot, he's a superhuman photographer, we'll leave it at that. I think the kids were a little bit tired on Friday night. So float night was down to business. And it always comes down to, you leave float night at quarter to 10:00 or so, and you worry about that one float, and they get it done. And the parade was terrific. The weather was phenomenal once again. And our varsity boys did a number on the opponent. We'll leave it at that.
They were inspired.
They were. So what a great weekend. And, you know, again, to follow it up on Tuesday board meeting with our our tenure folks, we'll recognize in a bit, just a just a great start to the school year.
I had a visit from Jeremy Gelb.
And a visit from Jeremy Gelb, who, if you hadn't heard, Jeremy was, he was there and he looked great. He was, Jeremy is a 2014 graduate, I believe. He was injured in in a beach accident. And it did a number on him. And he has been going through rehabilitation. And he was at the game and he looked terrific. So we were very happy to see him as well.
I'll just add to that, that his Huntington family and community, I just have to say, I don't know him personally, but I know him through other people because they have brought him to me and told me about his progress and posted on Facebook about it. This community is like nobody else. When you're in trouble, and I've been there myself, this community is like nobody else. And they have supported him unbelievably. And I just, that's a shout out to this community because it's really special.
I just returned from an upstate stint of the New York State Council of School Superintendents, the Fall Summit. Interestingly, a lot of attention focused on things like the future of Regents exams and APPR and all of that sort of centered upon where where leadership is heading. And as most of us know in this room, at least the certainly the educators here, that there is no commissioner at this point. It'll take, according to the SED officials that were up there, about seven to nine months to hire her successor. In the meantime, there are a lot of questions that remained unanswered. And I did attend a couple of sessions on curriculum and instruction updates. And I will say that they they got quite animated. And it wasn't just the Long Island folks. It wasn't just the North Country folks. There were people from all over the state, a little upset with not having answers on on certain things. And we are in the process of rolling out a bunch of new things related to new standards across the disciplines. I will have more information for the board on that as well as for our folks here. But there was a lot of questions that remained to be answered. I'll leave it at that. I'd also like, I may have mentioned this in the last meeting, but one of the, you know, obviously, S accountability kicks in even at an even greater level this year. There were questions on that. There is a fiscal transparency piece of the S process which required a massive redesign of our budget development process. And I'd like to thank Kathy and her staff for their diligence in our being among one of the very few who were scheduled to submit the new budget format this year. We did it with integrity and we did it on time. And I can tell you that that was appreciated by the SED officials. They didn't name people specifically, but they knew. So thank you for all your hard work there. There's also been a lot of attention paid to the red flag legislation. And I'd like to thank Jared and a number of folks that are in positions of leadership around the township and county for helping us to kind of, based on our safety presentation tonight, determine exactly what that that law means for school districts. There is more to come, but it there is quite a bit to it in terms of filing for an extreme risk order of protection if we believe that there is an individual in the school community that is a significant danger to him or herself or others. And this law allows us to apply immediately for a protection order that that would be applicable to the schools. But there is a lot of work still to be done there in terms of process. And Jared, being in his position, he's he's doing a great job. And he's he's on top of that. And we will be at the forefront of what we have to do there procedurally to get a policy or regulation in place in the respective manuals. As I mentioned to the board, I think I sent it a couple of weeks ago, we are already thinking about budget development 2021. For me personally, the summer is crazy busy. It's a little quieter. By the time mid-September and October rolls around, I can take a step back and enjoy the the great things that are going on around the district. But it unfortunately, it turns to budget development and planning for the following year in a very rapid manner. And we are looking at 2021. But I will mention that we did receive the final assessed valuation number for 1920. Come the next board meeting where we contribute to reserves and the board adopts the final tax levy, the final assessed value is actually higher than what was budgeted. So if you were calculating your tax bills based on the rate in our budget brochure, your taxes would be actually a little bit lower than that because the assessed value that the end the endpoint was a little bit higher than we budgeted. And that's a conservative approach that the board has taken. It obviously is appreciated in a situation like this. It was lower than May estimate, but certainly above the budgeted number. So that is helpful. So there's nothing really to discuss further there. But it's just good for the community to know that. We did get some preliminary numbers. It looks like our ERS number for 2021 in the employee retirement system is going to be about the contribution rate close to flat as compared to the current year. We are expecting an increase in the TRS number. And it looks like as of the first eight months of the school year, the projection, and this could change considerably if things vibrate wildly between now and the end of the year, the CPI is predicted to to land at about 1.53%. And that's below 2. And that's something we have to to start thinking about. On a congratulatory basis, I do want to acknowledge, we have three National Merit Scholarship competition semifinalists. So I'd like to congratulate Matt Gennarelli and Andrew Knowles and Ryan Knowles. And we also have a National Merit Commended student, and that's Justin Stevens. That's a nice number for a district of this size. So congratulations to those young people. And additional congratulations go out to, and he was with us a little bit earlier this evening, and we're going to do some honoring a little bit further down the road here, but future meetings. But we have two Long Island Arts Alliance Awards of Merit going to seniors Julian Wrench and Abby Semelsberger. They were honored at a ceremony at the Tillis Center a couple of weeks ago. So congratulations to a very talented pair there. Did you mention the home show?
I did mention the home show. Yep.
Remember you said noon.
I did.
There's a home game, too, October 12th, maybe, right?
No, I don't think they're performing there. I don't think they're performing there.
I think that's.
All right.
Jim, before we finish up, just for everyone's understanding, you talked about the additional budget forms that we had to fill in. That's like your your building breakdown and everything. It's it's really a whole lot of unnecessary work for us so that the state can have unnecessary oversight to kind of pick holes at, you know, a solid budget. My question, how much, you know, that's one of these unfunded mandates you hear about all the time. How much additional time, hours worked, do you feel that you guys had to put in?
You know, ask Kathy, just Jorge Soto alone, how much time he had to spend locked up in in his office.
And then the adding of the codes.
Yeah. So the the goal, I mean, you mentioned it, Bill, so I'll just elaborate for a second. The goal of the new S process from a state legislative perspective is to make sure that in a district that has eight buildings, that monies are being allocated equitably across all buildings. So we may have budgeted in the past for certain collection of supplies in a district code and then just distributed that money from there to all the buildings. And now we are absolutely required to take paper clips, I'm using it as a very crude example, but to budget the monies for them in each separate building. So we had to add 1,000 codes.
Oh, yeah, at least.
So this this was a labor-intensive process. And the the back office in the business area here was added for for weeks upon weeks upon weeks. And yes, an unfunded mandate.
And so that's, I mean, I just wanted to point out, you know, you're giving people that already have very busy, full-time jobs.
Yeah.
All kinds of additional work for to what end, you know, really? So when you hear us talk about these unfunded mandates and the burden, not only is it of getting the work done, but it's also taking away from getting your regular day job done as well. So thank you for that information and thank you for doing it.
Yeah, that's a very good point. All right. Well, that moves us to our first public commentary section. We have two public commentary sections, one now and one toward the end of the meeting. The first public commentary is open to making comments about things that were items for discussion and action. So we have the tenure recognition, which is a lovely item. We also had the district-wide school safety plan that was presented by Dr. Acker. And the third item would be the APPR Independent Evaluation Waiver. If there's time at the end of the first public commentary or during the second public commentary, then it's open to comments about other items. But in the beginning, we always have people come up to address the items for discussion and action. And I'll also, since we have a full audience, just give a little reminder that you can come to the microphone and make a comment if you are a resident of the district or a student or a faculty member. You have three minutes to speak. We ask that when you get to the microphone, you state your affiliation with our district so that we know where you're coming from. And also that you leave out any personal names of staff, students, any any specific names. This is not a forum to speak about specific people. It's really just a forum to bring general items of concern to our attention. All right. So I'm going to open it up to anybody that wants to come and speak about, we'll start with the items for discussion and action. If there were any questions about the presentation, you're welcome to come to the mic now. All right, if there is any, oh, wait. Everybody all good? All right, if there was anybody else that wanted to speak, we'll open it up now.
Hi, my first time at a board meeting. My name is Jennifer. Thank you. My name is Jennifer Brown. I'm a parent of a new kindergartner at Washington. He's very excited. I'm also an environmental sociologist and a professor at LIU Post. I am here today as a member of a local Mothers Out Front group. Some of us are parents in the Huntington School District, and others are parents in neighboring districts. We are mothers and others who are concerned about the impact of climate change on the next generation, our children. We know that there are things that we can do right here in our schools and in our town to improve air and water quality and reduce carbon emissions. I learned that our school buses are the number one mode of transportation in all of the country. In Huntington, our children ride diesel school buses. My child rides on a diesel bus. These buses pollute the air and directly impact our health, reduce lung capacity, and impair our cognitive abilities. This is especially true for children sensitive to fumes, such as those with allergies and asthma. A solution to this is electric school buses. I know that the immediate reaction to this is that the price of electric buses is greater than regular buses. However, the main reason I wanted to speak to you is to tell you that there are funding opportunities and supportive groups that will help reduce the costs so they are the same as a diesel bus. I can also point you to other school districts and school bus companies that have purchased electric school buses. We would love love you to ask Huntington Coach to replace the next school bus they retire with an electric school bus. And so I ask you to consider the following. One, will you commit into into looking into funding opportunities such as through utility companies in the state? There are a number of funding sources, and Mothers Out Front is working with a not-for-profit organization to make these projects happen nationwide. Will you commit to learning more about electric school bus campaigns and the benefits from electric school buses? There are places to look at Mothers Out Front website, Chispa and Green for All are great resources as well. Will you commit to learning about other pilot projects such as the one in Bay Shore in a partnership with PSEG, Edgewise Energy and Suffolk Transportation Incorporated, or the one in Massachusetts? These projects often take the form of a bus company working with a local utility to pay for the bus battery. The battery can store energy when the bus is not in use. And finally, and quite simply, if you're interested in electric school buses for our district, you can ask Huntington Coach to investigate the possibilities. We are not having as much luck. We're asking you. You can state that this is a priority and you encourage partnerships with PSEG and other resources. I encourage you to ask Huntington Coach detailed questions about their buses. If you are interested in this, we can connect you with organizations that are helping school districts examine the possibilities and fund these projects. My time as a parent in this district has just begun, and I am very interested in giving our children a clean, safe future. There is a lot that we could do in our schools to model important and creative solutions to the climate crisis. The electric bus is a big first step, and I believe our children would be incredibly excited to ride in them. We should also talk about other items to show our investment in the future, such as climate education and an improved recycling program. But I'll save that for another time. You have lots of ideas. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right.
I'd be interested in reading literature regarding anything that would be fiscally responsible that would save our environment. So if you want to forward it to the board, I'd be willing to read it. I couldn't commit to any of the things you said, but a singular person, I would love to read that.
Okay, thank you.
I was gonna say, if you have any any print information or to save the paper, you can send it electronically either to the board, to myself, or to the district clerk, and we can we can make sure it's it's.
I brought some with me.
Okay.
And I can also be happy to email you and forward it to the board. I wasn't sure who to email.
It's usually the best way.
Sure how to contact you that way.
Because we lose that stuff.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
If I'm not mistaken, I think the, who is it? Is it Leonard to make the electric bus? It's a Canadian company makes the electric buses. They normally have one at NISBA.
Oh.
Just coincidentally, I just sent something to Kathy and Mr. Hendrick this morning just because it was Lions?
Yep, yes, they are making one, they're making these buses, yeah.
Is it Lions? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and they recently brought one down to Long Island for people to check out. And I know one friend, her brother rides, works for the bus company, gets to drive the buses, and they all fight over who gets to drive the electric school bus.
I believe they had five buses contracted with the district, but I think that district may have owned their own fleet as opposed to contracted service, which does make it just a different scenario.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on then. Thank you to our items for discussion and action. First one is our tenure recognition. We had a really lovely tenure ceremony just before we came to the meeting. That's why we were just a couple of minutes late, and we have really a terrific group of faculty who are very deserving of this honor.
So we did recognize them about an hour ago. It's a tremendous group of people, and we emphasize that sometimes tenure in education is misunderstood and is looked at in a way that it just shouldn't be. It is not a gate that you pass through and things change. The folks that I'm about to announce, these are lifelong learners that are committed to bettering themselves instructionally from the time they started to the time that they're not doing this anymore, and they are wholeheartedly committed to the kids and the families and the community in Huntington. And, you know, I couldn't ask for a more talented and caring group, so I'd like to acknowledge them formally, and I'm going to ask you to come up and...
Oh yes, of course.
And I'm going to also ask that this group stick around for a quick photo. And we will start with Dr. Kathleen Acker, our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Management Services. Her presentation tonight was the final evaluative piece, and she did okay. District Social Worker, Navella Arman. Physical Education Teacher, Marissa Bergman. Guidance Counselor, Diana Bonilla. Social Studies Teacher, Sarah Buckalter. Elementary Dual Language, Christina Campagnoli. English Teacher, Allison Capewell. Elementary Teacher, Ms. Mary Beth here, she's really good at math, Ally Conlin. World Language at the High School, Natalia Herrera. Art Teacher at Finley, Deana Mortel. She had her whole family with her. Congratulations, Deana. Science Teacher, Physics at the High School, Amelia Sajis. Math Teacher at Finley, Abigail Simon. Assistant Principal at the High School, Gamal Smith. Art Teacher at the High School, our Resident Fashionista, Kim Valerio. Science Chemistry at the High School, Tom Van Bell. I'm sorry, Justine, I should have started at the bottom this time. Special Education Teacher at Wood Hall, Justine Vons. And if we could just gather that group outside, right in the hallway for a quick picture. So if we can just take a one-minute recess?
All right, everybody, we're going to continue on. Thank you for your patience, we really appreciate it. All right, so this brings us to our district-wide and school safety plan that Kathy just gave that excellent presentation of. So, and we're going to vote on it. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education adopt the attached district-wide and building-level safety plans for 2019-20, as well as authorized posting of the district plan only. Okay, so I need a motion to start with. I've got a motion from Linda and a second from Tom. Do we have any more questions that we need to ask before we go ahead? All right, then all in favor? Okay, that's six of us, obviously, because Phil is not here. All right, thank you again, Kathy and Jared and George. And finally, we are up to our APPR Independent Evaluation Hardship Waiver. Okay. Do you want to, should I read this and get a...
Yeah, you can get your motion.
Okay, let's do that. It's upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approved the submission of an undue burden independent evaluator hardship waiver application to the State Education Department and authorize the Superintendent of Schools and Board President to execute such application on behalf of the district. Okay, so let me get a motion from Christine and a second from Xavier. Any questions or comments about this? Want to say anything about it before we vote?
This is a document that has been approved for, this will be the third year consecutively. What it does is because of the fact, for example, that we only have one administrator in our primary buildings and to use them as independent observers and send them to other buildings, it would create a hardship and would leave that building administratively uncovered for a period of time. So this, we have submitted a document very similar to this for the past few years. The state has not hesitated to approve it, and we are asking for the same thing in 2019-20. It has to be approved by myself, the Board of Education, the Teachers Union, and the Administrators Union.
Excellent. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? That is everybody. All right. Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. McCoy?
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approves CSC CPSC submissions as delineated.
Okay, we have that. Can I get a motion? Tom and a second from Christine. All in favor? Lynn, thank you. All right, Mr. Polanski, personnel?
Okay, I am asking the board for, please, approval of the personnel items and schedules 1, 3, 4, 5, 8, 9, 10, 13, 15, 20, and 22.
All right, very good. Can I get a motion? Michelle and a second from Linda. Okay, any questions, comments?
You know, I've been doing this for a while, and I'm just wondering if maybe one day we can kind of have the community understand how this process works. Like, let's say, for example, a coaching appointment. You know, it's not something that we go through the process of selecting the coaches, it's a situation that happens that, well, you would explain it best, you know, they come to us and we just kind of say yes or no.
Right? Yes.
Right, and there are different schedules. When he announces the schedules, that's because there are different categories of staff members, whether it's instructional or non-instructional.
Correct.
Probationary, I mean, that's when you hear him say Schedule 1, you know, all of that, that's why they're divided into the ways that they are, just for people who, you know, may not realize.
And all of these schedules would obviously be posted for the public to look at. It also, just to kind of address what Xavier just requested, it depends on, as Jen pointed out, instructional, non-instructional, and if it's a faculty or staff member or an extracurricular advisor or coach, it may be a slightly different process. But that can be done, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we hit a motion and a second. All in favor? Excellent, thank you. And a big night for Dr. Acker. Oh, sorry, of course announcements.
He's been sitting here.
Sitting, waiting. That's true. Oh, that was so not nice of me, Christina. No, not Christina, he's talking, well, Christina too. Oh, well, that's... Christina also...
She could have gone in two different directions. I'm going to start with Schedule 1, and just to talk about an administrative appointment, it is a fairly, usually a fairly lengthy process, but sometimes things have to be abbreviated, and if the right person comes along, we can do that. But it starts with a screening, it continues with a committee meeting that is established via contract and follows with a meeting with Cabinet, a meeting with the Superintendent, and a meeting with the Board at the very least, and there could be layers in between depending on the time available. We are very happy that we found a candidate from the start that we were happy with, and each meeting, as it moved forward, we were even happier, and tonight I couldn't have been any happier, I don't think. And I am talking about our new Director of Guidance and Testing. I'd like to introduce Ms. Jeanette Alomia. We're very excited to have you aboard, and I'm glad you got a taste of Huntington this evening. It's a special place, and we know you're going to enjoy it. Okay, is there anybody else I should be announcing? So we, sometimes timing is a little confusing, but we acknowledge a number of people who were tenured last year. We actually, the board, just five seconds ago, granted tenure to one of our teaching assistants who I know loves this community more than life itself. Is that correct? More than Mike. Congratulations to...
Now we're talking about you, Christina.
Congratulations to Christina Plant on just earning tenure as a teaching assistant in Huntington.
Oh, that's true, we'll give her that one.
Christina is actually going to be invited, and it's just the timing of it, and she'll be invited to our next tenure reception, but we're...
But next year's your year.
Do you have an extra flower?
And Mike, she really did say she likes Huntington more than, yeah, never mind.
I'll wrestle that one.
All right, so that brings us now back to Dr. Acker for our business.
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve items J through P on this evening's business agenda.
All right, we've got all those. I got a motion from Tom, I've got a second from Michelle. Any comments or questions? All in favor? That is everybody. Christine, did you want to make a couple announcements?
Surely. So we have four donations tonight. The first one is from our Huntington Foundation, otherwise known as HEPI, which has donated $8,980 to the district for the purchase of math and movement math mats for use in the RTI math program. So we truly appreciate all that HEPI does and this particular donation tonight. And from Mr. Adam Jesse, we are accepting a donation of Mums and Mulch to Southtown Primary School with an estimated value of $550. Very generous and, I'm sure, beautiful. Park Avenue Tennis has made a donation of two cases of tennis balls to the athletic department with a value of $160, so we thank Park Avenue Tennis. And the United Way of Long Island and Huntington Coach have donated school supplies with an approximate value of $6,500 to the district in general, or was it to the district?
It was actually to Washington Primary School.
Okay, Washington Primary School.
Michelle was informed very abruptly, got me there. We had some fun getting those supplies into the building. Dr. Richards, I'm sorry. And we do appreciate...
Yes, that was a fun video of the chain.
That was cute.
That's all Dr. Richards.
It was great.
They're getting ready for marching band, they do the same thing when they load those Syracuse buses, so thank you to everybody who made those donations.
So if we could show our appreciation for those donations?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, we're in the home stretch here. We are up to our second public commentary section. Same rules apply, you get three minutes. Does anybody want to come up?
Good evening, my name is John Issing, and I'm a 20-year resident with the school district. I'm a volunteer coach of one of the athletic teams. First of all, I wanted to say that was a terrific presentation. I really appreciate the safety and security of our students, as well as the planning and the budgeting and all the time that goes into that. So that's much appreciated as a taxpayer. This is my second time at a meeting, and I didn't really hear when Mr. Palacios asked, used a reference to coaching. I'm just curious how the process works, how it coaches. I know they're at an at-will position, but I just, I couldn't really understand what Mr. Polanski was explaining because you were addressing or phasing him. Would you mind just explaining to us?
This is not really designed for an interactive question and answer. I'll be happy to have that conversation with you. There are contractual obligations that we have to follow. Coaching positions, for example, are open first to our own teaching staff members, but then there are a number of different considerations that go into, and they are annual positions, as you mentioned, they are at-will, but I would be more than happy to have that conversation with you if you want to get me a...
Could I arrange a meeting with you to...
Absolutely. You can give me a call, whatever's easier for you.
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you very much.
I guess I was here for moral support from Mr. Issing. My name is W. Gerard Asher. I'm at 96 Tetchester Road, Huntington, New York, but I'm not a resident. However, Tommy Lasorda bled Dodger blue. I bleed Blue Devil blue. And I respect the chair's position that I may not be authorized to address the board, so I would be willing to abide whatever decision you make, but I can promise you my comments won't be more than two minutes.
I'm sorry, as the Board President, I really have to stay consistent, and given at every other meeting that I've been at the head of, I've asked people who are not residents not to speak.
I feel so strongly about the issue that I have wished that I could have input on, that I wanted to actually come here and make sure that you actually made that decision that I can't speak in front of you. So, and I'm revealing the fact that I don't live in the...
I'm sorry.
That I don't live in the district, but I respect that situation.
And really, I appreciate that because the last thing I want to do is shut you down, but I have to stay consistent in the rules that I follow for our meetings, and those have always been the rules since before me.
Said I respect your decision, and I do.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
I would just add that anybody could feel free to send an email. You don't have to be a resident to send your remarks by email, so if...
Absolutely. Thank you, Christine, for reminding us of that. All right, if there's nobody else? All right, then we are going to move on to final comments by board members. Did anybody else have anything they wanted to say? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn from Tom and a second from Linda? All in favor? Thank you very much, very much. Have a nice night.